This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, I will call this meeting of the Gig Harbor City Planning Commission to order. And the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I'm sorry, we've got to do roll call first, okay? So let's do that. Commissioner Soltis.
Here.
Commissioner Snodgrass.
Here.
Commissioner Bradbury.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan is excused tonight, so we have a quorum. And for the meeting of October 6th. Do I have a motion or first of all, is there any discussion or corrections regarding the minutes? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I move we approve the minutes as written.
Okay, this is second from Commissioner Brown. All those in favor say aye, aye.
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 Now, then you opposed? Motion carries and the minutes are approved unanimously. Okay, next on the agenda is the public comment period. Do we have anyone for wanting to do public comments tonight, Michelle?
There is no attendees in the lobby.
Okay, Carl, is it okay then if I skip reading the rather lengthy public comment and decorum statement? If there's no one here to hear it?
Absolutely, Chair, that's just fine.
Okay, good, then we can move on. So we've got a presentation tonight from the Puget Sound Regional Council. So Carl, you want to go ahead and introduce them?
Absolutely, thank you, Chair. And it is my pleasure to introduce to you Paul Ingram and Maggie Moore from the Puget Sound Regional Council. I will let them introduce themselves in a little bit more detail. But I'll let you know that while I don't know Maggie quite as well, I do work with Paul frequently. We both attend the Growth Management Coordinating Committee meetings here for Pierce County. And I know Paul attends a lot of those meetings. And I think I was just saying earlier today that I'm impressed with the fact that Paul gets work done because he is at so many meetings all the time as part of his just day to day working environment. So but we really do appreciate Puget Sound Regional Council coming today. Paul and Maggie, thank you so much for coming and agreeing to do this for us. We recognize that your time is limited. So again, we do appreciate it. So I'll turn it over to you, Paul, for any further introduction and and presentation. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Carl. And yeah, thanks to Carl and Michelle for organizing this and inviting us to be here. We appreciate it. Again, my name's Paul Ingram, Director of Growth Management at Puget Sound Regional Council. And we'll tell you a little bit about us, about Vision 2050 and the work we're doing to try to support you with your comprehensive planning work. As Carl said, a lot of my work is actually going to meetings. So I'd say that's the fun part of my job is I get to talk to people in Gig Harbor or in other cities around the region and kind of try to keep my finger on kind of what's everybody up to. I'm going to do the always complicated thing of sharing a screen here. I think I can do it. So that hopefully works pretty well for you. I think it's working. And we'll just kind of dive right into this. I think so. So just to start off with, I like to, I like this photo and a few others that we have. We have lots of photos of Mount Rainier, and I like to talk about that because when we think of the Puget Sound region, it's the four counties from Snoomish to Pierce County and also including Kitsap County. And you know, there are some big cities in that area, some small cities. But you know, from the top of Mount Rainier down to the water. So a lot of, lot of stuff, a lot of variety of landscape, of environment, of different types of cities. A little over 6,000 square miles, 1,000 of those are in the urban growth area. So really a complex region with a lot going on in it. Our job at the Puget Sound Regional Council, I think, in addition to going to meetings or why we go to a lot of meetings is it's really to try to help cities and towns and counties talk to each other about how are we planning for growth, for transportation, for housing, for the environment? How are we coordinating with each other and trying to make the best decisions possible? So before I talk about vision, I thought it's important to talk about transportation because that's kind of the other half of what we do at PSRC. We just adopted a regional transportation plan. And it has all the transportation projects. Essentially, it's like all the transportation projects from every city and jurisdiction and every transit agency all bundled together into one entire plan for the region. So that that really allows us, meaning all of us, whether it's an individual city or the region and the staff at PSRC to be able to think about how do all those systems work together? How do we plan for those long term investments? And then an important part of that is that being part of the regional transportation plan qualifies projects to compete for regional funding that comes from the federal government. So we distribute about $270 million a year in transportation funding. When an individual project can be tens of millions, it's really not a huge amount of money. But sometimes it's just enough to be that last piece or to make a project financially viable. And that includes a lot of transit funding for transit agencies like Pierce Transit, for Sound Transit, also federal highways. Funding. It also includes the rural town centers and quarters funding that specifically provides funding for some of the smaller cities. So just wanted to kind of put that out there at the beginning because it relates back to then how we plan for land uses and growth in the region. In 2020, we adopted Vision 2050. It looks out, as you probably figured out, to the year 2050, when we plan that there will be for about 5.8 million people in the region. That's growth, well, I think we have a slide here. It's growth of more than a million and a half. And Vision 2050 is a lot like your comp plan. So we essentially kind of start the ball during the sequence of events of your comprehensive plan update where we kind of start the process. We adopt Vision 2050 here in the year 2020. And then that led to the countywide process of updating countywide planning policies. And now that's going into the local plan updates. By the time you're done, we'll start to be looking at how do we create Vision 2060? And this is kind of our onion skin diagram of how that fits together. We have that state direction in the Growth Management Act that says cities and counties, they need to prepare conference of plans every, every 10 years now. They updated that. We have our multi-county planning policies within Vision 2050 that set this broad regional vision and guidance. Then we have that countywide level. So that's PCRC adopting policies as well that talk about how cities work together within Pierce County. And importantly, establishing growth targets is a key part there. They also have a transportation funding aspect that they do. And then, of course, local comprehensive plans. We have a certification process, so we'll talk about that a little bit. Our goal is to help you do the best planning work that you can do that supports your community. At the end of the day, when you adopt your plan, then essentially Carl turns it in to me. And then we take a look at it and we take it to our board for certification process. Having a certified plan allows you to compete for those funds. And that's why I started off with that mention of the transportation planning. So having a certified comprehensive plan keeps the city eligible transportation funding through PSRC. So I mentioned, we expect a lot more growth. Can be very intimidating when you think that that's about two Seattles will come to the region over the next 30 years. The reassurance part is that similar to the type of growth we've been experiencing for the past 30, 40, 50 years. So so it's a lot of change, takes a lot of work to prepare and plan for. But it's also the type of change that we've been seeing for quite a while. I mentioned Vision 2050 is kind of the region's comprehensive plan, so goals and policies. It also identifies actions, so things that we as an agency will work on and also things that are expected at either the county or local level that that might be implementation steps. Updating your conference of plan is one of those implementation steps. It also includes the regional growth strategy, which doesn't have individual targets. That's what you do at the county level. But it sets that framework for guiding growth to the places where we're building infrastructure, where we have capacity and so on. It addresses housing, opportunities and equity, economy, transportation. A key part of it, as I said, is that regional growth strategy. And this map over on the side tries to kind of paint this picture at a regional scale. Like I said, without going into individual cities and saying this city must do that. But the basic concept is that the darker colored cities, so that's Bremerton, Tacoma, Everett, Seattle and Bellevue. Those are what we call our metropolitan cities. And those are where we should expect the most growth, that those we want to kind of keep our urban growth within those key urban cities. The dots you see on there are regional centers. So those are places that we've designated as regional centers. Cities have come to us and said, hey, we want to be a regional center. And we plan to grow in this area. So we say, great, we put the dot on the map. And then we anticipate that those areas will grow a lot too. And then there are other places, Gig Harbor kind of falls into that of there's still growth occurring, but maybe it's not as concentrated. There's no light rail service. It's not a big city that there's a more modest amount of growth expectation. And then, of course, there's farms, forest lands, areas that we really expect to see pretty minimal levels of growth. What's happened or what's changed in the last few years as we've updated Vision 2050? We've had a plan going back a few decades and we updated just like you update yours. Of course, it now goes out to 2050. That's pretty easy. There's been huge investments in transit, not just light rail, but also things like Kitsap Transit has expanded ferry service. We've seen some other initiatives, some streetcar developments and other things. So there's been a range of investments across the region and transit. There's also been a lot of development of the transportation network more broadly, things like the 167 connection and the the crossing of the Puyallup River. I want to say it's completed, but I keep driving across there. I'm like, is it really completed? It's hard to believe. It advocates for sustainable funding sources for cities to be able to pursue these infrastructure needs. It does a much better job of recognizing the role of native tribes and the military installations. The Growth Management Act really doesn't, or at least previously, didn't say much about those two entities. They're not required to plan since they're not state, they're not local agencies under the state. But it's been recognized over the years that both tribes and the military play a big role in our region and with our local communities and that there really needs to be better coordination with both tribes and the military as we do our planning. There's a new chapter on climate change that addresses both planning or trying to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, but also recognizing that there are impacts and that we need to work better on resiliency of our, of our communities. And then there's additional regional work on housing and equity directed by Vision 2050. So we developed a regional housing strategy this year based upon that direction. And we're currently developing a regional equity strategy that has guidance about how to improve racial equity in our region. So that's kind of, those are kind of new things in vision. And I point those out because you have an existing comprehensive plan. It's a really good plan. You know, there's like nothing wrong with it. But as far as looking forward into the future, some of the things that you might be looking at might be similar to the things that we looked at as to like, okay, we have a bunch of policies. But what are some of the things that maybe we didn't address as much or that are new or upcoming that we want to address more significantly this time? And they might be similar issues for you. We're, we're kind of at this red dot here in 2022. The top parts of this graph are intended to show that we adopted Vision 2050 and that created the foundation for a bunch of our regional work of housing strategy, the equity strategy that I just mentioned. Also, the transportation plan that I mentioned at the beginning that was adopted earlier this year, the economic strategy that was adopted December of last year. So it's, it created the foundation for a lot of regional work. It also created kind of that foundation for the countywide work that was recently completed. And then that supports your local work. And then, as I was saying earlier, then kind of at the end of that process, it comes back around and we certify local plans. And then a few years later, we start this process all over again. I'm going to say a couple more and then I'm going to hand it over to Maggie. So when we certify plans, what do we look for? A simple answer would be like, well, we check GMA. What does GMA say should be in conference of plans? Some of the key details of that are that there's a consistency in the plan itself. So if you're planning for a certain level of growth in your land use element, is that level of growth also then consistent with how you're planning for your transportation services or for other infrastructure, say water and sewer? Needed to support that growth that we want, we want to see that plans are consistent from one side to the other so that we don't have a city that's planning for too much growth or too little, you know, based upon the type of infrastructure that it's trying to support. Similar that there's services and facility needs and that those line up with each other. A lot of the key requirements that we look for are transportation related. So we check. Did you, do you have a transportation project list that's reasonable based upon expectations? And based upon the funding that you think is available, both locally and through grants? As opposed to say, just a wish list of projects that might be nice to have? Like, is there some level of discipline there about the transportation spending that's anticipated in the plan? And oftentimes plans have a more precise list, say their six year list. And then they might have a long term list that's less, less precise. There's not as much engineering put into it. But there's still some level of acknowledgement as to how much that's going to cost the city over the long run. There's some demand management expectations and there's a requirement to do pedestrian bicycle planning. So it can't just be a plan for roads. In the middle column there, we look for consistency with the regional plan. So we've done our plan with the regional transportation plan. It's at a much higher level, very broad. But we want to see where the roads line up in your jurisdiction, how they connect to the next jurisdiction and down the road. Pun intended. Because it is a regional transportation system and many of the facilities are state facilities as well. So there needs to be that coordination. What is the state planning for the highway? What is the city planning? What's in the regional plan? And ideally, those are all working together and they're saying the same type of thing. And then a few other things that are specifically in Vision 2050. We've talked about the growth strategy. We do look at the emissions related to transportation. So pollution, air quality and climate emissions. There's an expectation of looking to see what are those emissions? And whether the city's managing those, probably not a big issue for Gig Harbor. It's more some of those local air quality things can be a bigger issue in parts where there's air quality attainment issues. Although that's been changing over the years because of smoke. It used to be that air quality was more of a pollution issue. And now the, I mean, it's still pollution, I guess, but more of a transportation issue. Now it's becoming more of a smoke issue. And then looking at things like what we call equitable transit oriented development. It's really of how do we leverage our transportation development to support our development? Development of housing and our commercial services in a way that benefits the community broadly. And how does it relate to housing supply and choices? There's been a lot of talk of jobs, housing balance. I don't think any community is exactly balanced in a technical sense. But the idea of people should be able to drive to a job in their community or in a nearby community. They shouldn't have to drive all the way across the region to be able to find a job or to be able to find a house that they can afford. We want affordable choices for living and jobs to be in proximity to each other. In part, just so that that transportation distance is, you know, if somebody's driving five miles, that has a lot less impact on the transportation system than if somebody's driving 50 miles. But also for the benefit of the individual in the community, that if somebody has a 10 minute or 20 minute commute, it's better for them, their family and their community than somebody who has a two hour commute. So looking at how those things interrelate between housing, services, jobs and the transportation system. So those are all things we look at in the process and that we encourage you to look at. We, so we do certify at the end of the process, but we really have kind of what we think of as this three step, beginning, middle and end process. We're glad to be here with you tonight at what I would call step one. Broadly speaking anyways, at the beginning, thinking about how should the plan update occur? We're happy to engage and support in the middle with resources and assistance that we can provide so that your process goes really smoothly. And then, you know, cross our fingers, everything goes well and there's been good communication. And then certification at the end of the process is really easy. I'm going to turn it over to Maggie and Maggie, I'll click on the slides for you. Maggie's going to talk about our series of support for local jurisdictions that we're calling Passport to 2044.
Great, thanks, Paul. So as Paul mentioned, our regional plan, Vision 2050, really sets the stage for the local comprehensive plan. So a big part of my work and the support that we provide at PSRC is helping local jurisdictions, the staff, planners, consultants who are working on those plans create really great plans that supports that regional vision. So we are hosting a Passport to 2044 workshop series. So these have all been virtual webinars throughout the year. And Paul, if you want to go to the next slide. And we kicked it off in June of this year, co-hosted between us at PSRC, the Washington State Department of Commerce and the Municipal Research Services Center, MRSC, to really provide information on what our review of comprehensive plans look like, what support we have for the development of those comprehensive plans and what the process is. We had close to 300 people from both our region, the four county region, but also from the rest of the state. Planners, local staff who work on those plans as well as consultants join us at that webinar in June to really learn from the group that's there. So we know that some jurisdictions kicked off their planning process at the beginning of 2022. Some are starting now. People are at really different parts of this process. I also know that there are a lot of new staff in our region and in the state of Washington. So for a lot of people, it's their first time working on a comprehensive plan update. So there are lots of need for kind of the basics of what goes into the update for the comprehensive plans as well as what's new since last plans were updated. And all of these webinars are being recorded, so we are hosting a whole series. So I mentioned that June kickoff on comprehensive planning. And then in August, we held one on climate change. We held one on economic development, transportation and one on housing last week. That one was focused on racially disparate impacts. We're having another one on housing in February, focus more on housing need and capacity. And then we also have a number coming up and scheduled for the rest of this year. So these are really great resources that are available online. And we've, we're partnering with the Department of Commerce on all of them. So they have kind of a different set of resources that they're sharing at them. We also have local jurisdictions presenting. So I think it's one thing for us to share. This is what you should be doing. This is what you can be doing. But it's been really nice to have local city staff talk about how they've incorporated things into their local plans. Can go to the next slide, please. So in addition to those webinars, we also have a series of guidance and resources both available on our website and in development right now. These are released by PSRC, but they include a lot of direction as well as review from local staff throughout the region and experts on these different topic areas. So I have a list here and you'll have access to this and they're all linked. I do want to also point out that we keep all previous certification reports on our website. So the last round of plan review, PSRC wrote up a report that talks about each jurisdiction's plan during that certification process. So that's a really great resource as you're looking into updating the plan this go around. Go to the next slide. So some of these resources are element guides, so really specific to the different elements of a local comprehensive plan. So we have an element guide release on the economic development element, which includes a lot of best practices and policies in there of including either an economic development element or throughout the plan. There's also guidance on climate change since that's really a new point of emphasis in vision as well as in local plans. If you can go to the next slide. And we also have some guidance documents. So these are shorter, really on topic areas to be incorporated throughout plan. So we have one on equitable engagement as well as one on coordination with tribes. And there are many others like this on our website too. We also have a newsletter. So this is quarterly. It doesn't, we don't send things out to this listserv all of the time. So this has the newsletter as well as our events. And this really talks about what's new in our world at PSRC regarding comprehensive plan updates and how to get involved or learn more about the process. So this is a great resource to have as well as this newsletter. And that is all I have to share.
Yeah, and one of the things I will just add to that, you can see we have a whole bunch of resources. We try to try to be at both ends of the spectrum here, both in having lots of materials and resources available to help you while also recognizing like, we don't want to overwhelm you or your staff with so many resources that like you can never get to actually talking to your community and figuring out what you need to do. We recognize there's a balancing point there. So we're glad to work with you, work with Carl and others as to figuring out what, you know, what's most valuable to you, which are some of the resources that might make the most difference in your update process. But thanks again for having us here tonight.
Paul and Maggie, thank you very much. I'm wondering, are you available for questions now? If the commissioners have questions of you?
We'll do our best to answer what we can.
Okay, does anybody want to start out here or should I just go around the group? With questions? Okay, Commissioner Soltis.
I'm sorry about the dark background. It's not meant to be moody or anything like that, just a low light. Thank you for your presentations, both of you. Really excited about the resources in particular that you're going to have available to us. We'll be diving into that shortly. Two questions, basically. We've experienced pretty incredible growth here in Gig Harbor over the last number of years. And I kind of wonder if the Growth Management Act or the PSRC recognizes that and perhaps adjusts its guidance based on how much further we are along than we actually thought we would be by this, by 2022?
Well, there's definitely a recognition of that guidance and in, I mean, of that growth that's occurred. In some ways, I would say, you know, that's just the aspect of looking at those targets again, looking out, you know, another decade and readjusting those targets. So I don't have your new targets in front of me right now. But the city has gone through that process, working with the county, thinking about what should those new targets be for that 2044 period rather than the current ones, which are 2030?
Okay. I would, I would also maybe add to that a little bit, Paul, if I could, that there, we've, we're changed. They've changed the process just a bit. So rather than updating our comp plans every eight years, we're going to be updating every 10 years. And along with that comes sort of something that hasn't happened in the past. And that's sort of a midway check, you know. So within five years, we'll be looking at that comp plan and those growth targets and kind of, you know, understanding how it's working. And and I think um I don't know, Paul, maybe you could answer this. I'm not sure if there will be an opportunity for sort of a readjustment then of those um of those population targets at that time, at that five year mark, or if that just informs um informs us better when we get uh through the ten years. I'm not sure actually about that.
Yeah, I I think we're all interested to see how it plays out. I I think it does create the potential for that. There were there are two aspects. One is um when we updated vision, there was recognition that some counties have what's called a reconciliation process. So like we go through, we set targets. After we do all the conference of plans, maybe there's need for some adjustment. We saw that actually um um Gig Harbor actually shifted some target uh into the bank, I guess, I if I remember right. So I essentially to allow for that type of process. So each of the counties now has some form of process where if there needs to be some adjustment after the comp plans uh are worked out, then there could be that. And then as Carl said, there's this five year review process the state has now required. Um and that may be an opportunity for um for both us to adjust vision for uh counties to make adjustments, to essentially kind of see are things on track or does some other work need to occur?
Thank you. Uh and one other question, Chairman, I had really quickly, um it with this discussions of climate seem to be kind of a a key component, new component that you guys are are putting some emphasis on. Would you be expecting a new element in a comprehensive plan for just climate alone?
We're really looking to see um our cities uh developing policies and strategies to address emissions and potentially resilience, but more importantly, the the transportation related aspects. And there's a number of different ways. So you may might uh have those be integrated in the elements that you already have. They might be part of your transportation policies or land use policies. In the prior version of Vision, we'd we had a subsection, so we didn't have a standalone chapter, but we had a sub section of a chapter. So you could do something like that, or you could have a separate chapter. So it's you really have a lot of flexibility. We're just, we're more looking for is it an issue that you considered and addressed through your planning work and recognizing um the transportation impact on climate specifically?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Think you're muted, Chair.
Sorry about that. Other questions?
Uh I have one. Tell me what equitable engagements means.
Sure. Yeah, equitable engagement is really uh just the concept that um that everybody should have an opportunity um to participate in the planning process. So I would say, you know, it's a traditional um planning process is to hold a public hearing, typically seven o'clock on a, you know, Wednesday night or Thursday night. And some people, that might be convenient for them. For other people, that might not be a convenient way to participate. So it's really looking at your community broadly and thinking, do you have multiple ways for people to engage in the process so that you know, if somebody works at that time period or if somebody has kids or has other constraints, that they still have ways that they can participate, that there's not just one way to participate.
Do you know of any cities that are doing a particularly innovative job on that, uh for example, using uh online surveys or 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 other uh digital tools to elicit input from the citizens? I mean, who who's outstanding in that category?
Oh, who's outstanding? Well, I was gonna agree. It's like, yes, surveys can be great, um because they can reach um in in theory, anyway, they they can reach everybody or a sampling of kind of your whole population. Um we've used uh focus groups which can be used to maybe target groups that are hard to hear from, groups that you don't normally see. We've done fun things like go to community events and do tables. Um Maggie as does a great job with outreach, but also Maggie, you've talked with some of the other communities. Is there any any that you want to highlight as examples?
Yeah, there are a lot and there are a lot in that guidance document. We kind of link to, you know, what other jurisdictions are doing. Um the ones uh that come to mind are bigger jurisdictions right now. So the city of Tacoma. Um there are jurisdictions that do um these community liaison programs where they pay a community member who um can act as a spokesperson for their community and really be part of that. The city of Bellevue does that as well. Um the city of, I think Edmonds has some good things that they've done in some of their um more local neighborhood plans. So there are a lot of really, I mean, in this region especially, a lot of work that's being done. Um also at PSRC, we've started compensating community members in some of those focus groups and things. Um which is has been really helpful for us in getting new voices to participate with us. It's obviously not many people know who the Puget Sound Regional Council is or what we do. So our engagement to get a um big section of the population can be really tricky. So we've had to deploy um many different methods to do that. But there are a lot of examples in that guidance document.
And and one that I would also point out is um we've had some great luck talking with uh high school student councils. Um so that may be something where you want to reach out to one of your high schools and say like, do they have a government affairs type council or or something? Um sometimes mayors uh you know, support that directly or something, but um those have been great. And we have a ex- uh kind of a toolkit of engaging students in a discussion about planning for the future. You're welcome to borrow that. All of this stuff takes time and staffing. So I I don't want Maggie and I to come and, you know, list a ten, a hundred different ideas. I think Carl to say like, Paul, what did you do? But um there there are lots of good tricks. And then I think it's uh, you know, finding ways that can that work with you, work with your community uh between events and uh different uh neighborhood activities that you might be able to engage in.
Hey, Paul, where where is that guidance uh on engaging uh students? Because that is something that uh we've been talking about in the in the planning division here is to is to get out to the high schools and get them involved in the process this time around. I'd love to take a look at that. I I is it just in the planning resources for Vision Twenty Fifty or?
I I'll have to look again. I see Maggie, it looks like she's scanning the screen.
Send me a link, send me a link whenever you
We'll send you the materials.
Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Bradbury, do you have any questions?
I do not have any questions. I just I I would commend everybody on on the uh planning that's done. I think it's great. My my general comment is, as Gig Harbor is an example, uh reality uh can be quite different from what we plan for. Uh and and so, you know, my my concern would be how we in Gig Harbor as well as in the region respond to these changes that do not uh fall in line with what we have foreseen.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Snodgrass, any uh comment, comments or questions from you?
It looks like we might have lost Commissioner Snodgrass. Um I didn't even notice that. Um but we're okay. We still have Quorum. But I don't know, um she she must have lost her connection or something, Chair.
Yeah, she logged off about five fifty.
Okay.
Okay. Uh actually, I had a a few questions uh for the for Paul and for Maggie. Um what what do we see since light rail is potentially such a big part of the transportation system? And we've got people from Gig Harbor who are now commuting, probably for a long time, have been commuting to Seattle. Uh what do we see the uh light rail system connecting uh this area with Seattle uh in the future?
Yeah, I mean, that's a great question, isn't it? Um I well, the the big uh aspect of light rail, and you probably have seen, it's connecting down to Federal Way right now, and there's a lot of work um going on defining the station locations in Fife and Tacoma. The Tacoma Dome Station will really be critical for the entire South Sound area as a transportation hub um where it connects into downtown Tacoma, but also has Park and Ride, has the um the commuter rail station. It'll have the light rail terminals. Um so that'll be a a big connection. And while I don't know sound transit plans, uh you know, I don't have them all memorized. The um connection from Gig Harbor to that um Tacoma Dome Station um will be really a valuable one. The um, you know, it's it's still not super fast. It's not a Chinese bullet train to coming into Seattle. But the reliability of the light rail system going you know, from Tacoma to the airport and into Seattle will be much greater um than I five. Um so for those people that can connect and who either work downtown Seattle or in one of the locations near that light rail system, being able to make that transit connection could be uh very powerful.
Okay, thank you. Uh wanted to, a couple of other questions here. Housing inequity. I'm hearing a lot of of people are more concerned about homelessness. Uh will the plan be addressing how we get to the homeless into some sort of a living situation that's not out on the streets or camping out in the in a park or something like that?
Right. No, it's a it's a great question. Um Vision or Vision Twenty Fifty has some broad policies, and then we have a regional housing strategy. But even at that level, it's really at a high regional level. That that points to the idea that uh we need more housing, period. We need a lot more housing built in the region. Uh we need more services for the groups like you're talking about, um and we need more coordination or some of those key points. The the how to exactly do that, um I would point to both uh Pierce County's uh Human Services Program where they've been really working a lot on homelessness issues and to uh the SHAPE Group, which is the um multi-jurisdiction organization in Pierce County trying to coordinate um housing issues and and affordable housing issues. Um you know, on one hand, if we had more housing and more affordable housing available, there would be fewer families that get uh pushed off into homelessness. Um we've seen a lot of research done about vulnerable uh vulnerable populations and people who uh essentially have no savings. And so they're in a situation where if they get a rise in rent, a raise in rent um or a medical bill, they may be pushed into homelessness. So that's really where if we can have a a sufficient supply of housing that's reasonably affordable, um we can really avoid the impact of those that are really vulnerable. Um on the other side of that, we know that there are, you know, uh drug issues, mental health issues, human services issues um that require a lot more services and support. And that's where I think talking with Pierce County Human Services could be really valuable to understand their approach.
Okay.
Yeah.
And lastly
Oh.
Yeah.
Uh Chair, I just wanted to chime in on that a little bit if I could too and just um and sort of talk about what we're doing at the local level. Uh and you know, and of course, using the resources that 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 Puget Sound Regional Council provides to us as well as others, you know, Commerce and and Pierce County as well. Uh but we're currently working on a housing needs assessment, and Robin, who's with us here tonight, is um is heading that up with uh with the consultant Community Attributes Incorporated is working on that for us. And that will feed into um our comp plan and uh policy goals and actions uh around housing and and in particular, middle housing. Um and we're also partnering, we are, we are a SHAPE partner. Gig Harbor has uh signed on with SHAPE. Uh and we are uh also working with them through a grant uh that was provided by Commerce. Um to uh we've collaborated with some other cities, some other local um jurisdictions here in Pierce County um to uh look at middle housing policies. And SHAPE is bringing in Burke uh consulting from Seattle to help us do that work, who um they've really got a a a really good handle on housing, affordable housing, attainable housing um and figuring Sorry, I went, I muted by accident there. Uh really figuring out what our need is uh at at um at income bands, you know, at at the uh at at various income bands a- across the board. So there's, there's a lot of work that's going on right now in that regard. Uh and and I'll also say that council in this um this budget, uh our our next biennial budget coming up, uh that they're getting ready to approve for twenty three, twenty four is considering uh a new uh position at the city of Gig Harbor, which would be a Housing and Human Resources Manager. That would be sort of our hub for um uh helping us with all that outreach uh to all of those organizations out there that are doing good work, working with SHAPE, uh working with Puget Sound Regional Council, Pierce County Commerce. Um and and also being that person, that liaison to those folks who are in need now today, you know, so take it away from the from from the planning level and look at, okay, what's happening, boots on the ground. Um and we've had some, you know, we we're we're starting to see some of that in Gig Harbor now, you know, we're not, we are, we're, we are not um immune um to homelessness. And so we're starting to see some of those encampments around town and uh we really need to start formulating that on the ground policy. How are we gonna handle this uh in in a more immediate um manner? And so hopefully that position would would help us achieve uh some directives to uh take care of those issues.
Okay, well, that's good. It sounds like we're we're making some, definitely making some progress in that area. One last question for Paul and Maggie, and that is on the emissions. I know the state is going to be prohibiting the uh sale of new vehicles that are not electric uh in twenty thirty. And how is that gonna factor into your emissions plan?
Yeah, that's a great question. It it it'll be be really interesting. We actually were just having a a discussion with our executive board about that. So we have a goal to um reduce emissions, I think it's by eighty percent by the year twenty fifty, but our executive board wanted to know well, where will we be at twenty thirty? Um because a lot of those transit investments, a lot of the other things that uh we're doing don't get built until later. And so, uh you know, like, how are, how are we gonna get there? Uh maybe we get there by twenty fifty, but are we going to make progress in the near term? And there's likely to be some gaps. So one of the, but one of the things we're trying to look at now is what is the predicted rate for what we call the fleet conversion? So fleet is just what our term for all the cars out on the road. And uh the fleet turns over on average about, I think it's every something like nine point eight years, a little less than ten years. Um so of course, you know, some people have old cars and whatnot, but on on average, you have about a ten year turnover of that fleet. So even if they switch in, I I think it might actually be twenty thirty five, but twenty thirty or twenty thirty five, you still have like a ten year period that those older cars are on the road and you have that transition occurring over time. So we have some staff that are working on that question right now. I don't have an answer, but um trying to do the math as to how much you would anticipate, both by current adoption. We've seen, you know, a big shift over the last few years as Ford, GM and others have started to become players in the electric car market. So we're seeing that shift. So it's both trying to predict, you know, what is the market doing? What are the manufacturers doing along with the state mandate? Um so, you know, some increase over time, and then the shift in twenty thirty or twenty thirty five. And then how long does it take for the fleet to turn over? Uh meanwhile, you also have something that we model, which is just the uh the fuel efficiency standards. So every few years, the fuel efficiency standards go up for the fuel, for the gas burning cars. That will also change. So there's a lot of math involved in trying to predict exactly you know, what those emissions are. But um the the four counties, the Clean Air Agency and us have all been working on doing an analysis of climate emissions and in trying to make those predictions as best we can.
Hey, thanks. Other questions from the group?
And and again, Chair, I'll let me, I'll just chime in from at the local level here. And and again, Cheryl, let me I'll just chime in from at the local level here. And what we're what we're working on right now, and I and I know I've brought this to commission's attention in the past, but I'll just, I'll say it again that we're council has basically given us a directive to work on that fleet conversion now. And so that in so that any of our fleet vehicles that are being replaced in the for the foreseeable future, with maybe the exception of our first responders at this point, will be electric or at the very least hybrid. And 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 I'll couch that with to the extent that we can get them because they're very difficult to get right now. We've been waiting on a hybrid escape, I think, since January, and we're supposed to get it next month is what they're telling us now. So they're very difficult to get, but we are on the capital improvement project list in this biennial budget, we do have electric charging stations, vehicle charging stations that are going to go in here at the Civic Center that would be used for our fleet vehicles. And then down the line, we'll probably be installing some that would be used, could be used. And 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 then finally, we are working on a we're also working on we're also working on a climate action plan. And we've actually just reached out to a consultant that we we'd done some interviews a couple weeks ago, and we're getting under contract with a with a consultant to start working on that climate action plan, which would be the first one ever for the city of Gig Harbor. So we're pretty excited about that.
Okay.
Share.
Yes.
Yeah, if I could, if you're done asking us questions, I was just wondering if I could ask one, which would simply be what do you all think are one or two of the kind of top issues for for your update coming forward?
Okay, who wants to start, wants to address that? Don't all speak at once. Well, then I'll give you mine, and that would be transportation and climate change would be the two big issues that I see for Gig Harbor. Commissioner Brown, you have any thoughts there?
You're muted.
Tom, you're muted.
Community engagement is something I'd like to add to that list because we we often hold hearings without having anyone attending. And I think we could do, there's a lot of room for improvement in terms of engaging community and seeing what people really think on on these issues. I think the biggest issue is how do we in Gig Harbor comply with the Growth Management Act? We we are in a community that is substantially built out. So complying with a lot of those requirements is going to be very challenging.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Soltis. Bob, you're muted.
Okay, sorry, I stepped out for a moment. Hope I didn't, I won't step on anybody's toaster, but I agree totally with Larry that Commissioner Bradbury that integrating the Growth Management Act with what's actually happening here in Gig Harbor, I think is going to be a challenge. I mean, our transportation plans were probably based on a much slower growth than actually has occurred. So that's going to really hit transportation, I would expect. And actually, honestly, Paul, I'm thinking the environment of Gig Harbor has as as Larry said, it's been built out. So we've lost a lot of what made Gig Harbor Gig Harbor. And I think probably, you know, when we do the community interviews, people are going to say, what the hell happened to Gig Harbor? This is nothing like the place I moved into ten years ago even. So we have to kind of resolve that kind of disconnect between growth and what the historical nature and the environment of Gig Harbor. I think that's going to be, we're going to hear that loud and clear from the citizens when we start our community engagement. And we have to develop a plan that kind of touches all those categories and keeps the keeps Gig Harbor being a Gig Harbor that people still love and appreciate. I I think they feel it's kind of slipping away in some cases, and we've got to make sure that it doesn't somehow.
Yeah, absolutely. And that that's that's something that I've heard from people too, is the kind of the degradation of the environment. Any other questions from the group? Paul or Maggie, any closing comments?
Hey, could I could I could I piggyback on what Commissioner Soltis said there and just ask Paul and Maggie on 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 that? On that item in particular, protecting, you know, community character despite growth is how are you hearing that from other communities or in your experience, have you heard that from other communities? Because I know that's something that in my experience, you know, we run across that a lot, right? I mean, that's 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 one of those things that is it's tough for a lot of communities to to stomach is that, you know, the the growth factor and and trying to maintain, you know, some some semblance of of the historical character of a place and you know, some communities have done it very well, in in my opinion, and and I think others have have failed miserably. And we don't, you know, we want to be, we want to be the 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 option number one of the of the two, obviously, but just in in your experience, I mean, are you guys hearing that a lot as you're going out here and talking about comp plan right now?
Yeah, well, I I think we hear about it quite a bit, you know, for the past few years. But definitely, it's interesting, we're just talking with some of the staff at Commerce yesterday. And we're having some discussion about Walla Walla. So if you don't know, Walla Walla has been updating its housing regulations to support more kind of middle housing type developments, duplexes and so on. And initially, I I was I was assuming that, you know, Eastern Washington, other parts of the state are generally more conservative. You know, and and more reluctant to take on planning issues. And then, you know, some of the people at Commerce were reminding me of it, the the communities in the Central Puget Sound, they've had to, if you will, deal with a lot more growth than other parts of the state. So other parts of the state might actually be kind of more open to some of these types of zoning changes where communities in Puget in the Puget Sound, you have a lot of communities that are like, we've been growing too much or we've been growing too fast and and dealing with reactions to that. Certainly, I I think like Muckletion Edmonds, we we saw, but I I I think it kind of shifts around from community to community at different times. Maggie, you have any thoughts as to kind of where you've heard that?
Yeah, I was kind of, we've heard that a lot in our community engagement at work. So when talking to people, and I think a good question is like, what are those aspects of the community character that you want to retain? So and really, I think that's a really great question when doing community engagement is to see like, what are people actually talking about? Because we know there's growth and things are changing, you know, technology changes and things move forward. But what are the things that are really important to each community to hold on to? And I think that's different in different places, but it's a really like good question for us to ask as planners of what those aspects are.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I just want to thank you for having us here tonight. Enjoyed the discussion and enjoyed being invited to talk about planning in the region.
Okay, and our thanks to you too, Paul and Maggie, for taking your time to be with us tonight. Really appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming. Really do appreciate it.
Okay. We don't have anything else on the agenda except other business. Are there any issues that commissioners want to raise at this time? Or anything we want to discuss? Commissioner Soltis. You're muted again, Bob.
So sorry. Yeah, I wanted to ask Carl and Wendy's gonna, are you going to bring the Pierce County people in for the their comprehensive planning policies and how that affects us as well as I could do with PSRC?
Oh, we have, it's a great question, actually. Commissioner Soltis, I hadn't considered Pierce County. We were bringing, we are bringing in the Department of Commerce. They will be coming in at your next meeting on November seventeenth to give sort of a similar spiel to what Puget Sound Regional Council just gave you, but it'll be from their perspective. And so we here in in the four county region, and I think you heard Paul talk about that a little bit, you know, Vision twenty fifty only applies to four counties, Snohomish, King, Pierce and Kitsap. That's it's it's all it all it affects. And so we are therefore lucky enough in Pierce County to have two two masters in a sense to get our comp plan certified and approved. And so it goes through that certification process that Paul was describing through Pierce County Regional Council, but it actually has to be approved for consistency with the Growth Management Act by the Department of Commerce, just like we do with any comp plan amendment, it has to go to Commerce for approval. Our comp periodic update is no different. And in fact, it's it's much more rigorous, of course, as you might might expect. They've they've got a checklist that Robin's actually already gone through to kind of look at where, you know, where where changes will have to be made based on state law. And we also will have a similar checklist from Pierce County Regional Council that we'll have to sort of compare to as we're going through the process. So anyway, so that those were the those were the two that we wanted to bring in because they're the ones who are really going to be approving this plan once we're done. But it's a great idea to bring in Pierce County and no reason why we couldn't reach out to long range planning over there and have them come in and talk a little bit about their process and and maybe how it overlaps with our with our own. We we could certainly do that.
I think it just builds up the expertise of the group.
Yes.
Okay, we'll we'll look into it.
Commissioner Brown, anything you want to discuss this evening?
I would like to know more about what's something Carl mentioned at an earlier meeting, and that is plans to engage a consultant on community engagement. I'd like to get some detail, Carl, at some future time about what you have in mind there and where that stands.
Commissioner Brown, are you talking, are you talking about a consultant that we're going to bring in to help us with the with the periodic comp plan update?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So we just interviewed. Oh, I'm sorry.
Specifically with looking at some new ways to for community engagement.
Absolutely. Yeah. And and that is, so we're required by law to do to when we're updating our comp plan or especially the periodic update to engage the community throughout that process. And we have to show how we've done it. But that doesn't get to your point about innovative and new ways to do it. We just have to show that we've done it. So we could just go through the motions, you know, and but of course, we're not planning to do that. And so the we've we've interviewed three consultants to this point, and actually, we invited Commissioner Soltis to sit in on those interviews as Vice Chair. We invited the Chair originally, but he was unable to, he was he was unavailable that day. So Commissioner Soltis's Vice Chair was invited. And so we were working through the the oh, the scoring for our interviews and sort of our thoughts about how how those went. And we will, we need to make a decision and present that decision to the mayor and city administrator to get their buy in and then we'll, we're going to get them under contract. So we're hoping to have a contract with the consultant by the end of the year. And begin sort of rigorous community outreach beginning in in January would be would be great if we can, if we can turn it around that quickly. But that's the that's the hope. And I will say that all three consultants talked about outreach. And they talked about innovative ways to get out to the community and, you know, and through an equitable lens, of course, just like Paul was saying in his presentation. And, you know, interestingly, there's, we have so many more options nowadays, and I and you brought it up, Commissioner Brown, that, you know, getting getting to people online nowadays is is another another tool that we have. And there's many new tools out there as a result of COVID, you know, COVID was sort of, you know, was an unfortunate event. But it also allowed for a certain amount of innovation to to seep into the work that we do. And so all of those consultants talked about that sort of hybrid approach of getting to people in in multiple ways. And so when we get to that point of public participation and putting together a public participation plan, I will be suggesting that the consultant comes before this body and we have, we have that discussion and get some buy in from from the commission on what that outreach looks like. Because Robin and I have talked a lot about, you know, how how can we get the planning commission more involved in the in the in this process? And maybe even conducting some of that outreach with us, you know, going out to to the people in booths and stands and, you know, standing in front of the post office or, you know, various places and 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 getting some feedback. And so we would really like to include the planning commission in some of those in some of that work, if that's if that's something that commissioners are interested in, of course, you know, I I we don't get to direct your work.
I certainly would be interested.
Just as as a follow up, Carl, did did you have a request for proposals for the those consultants?
Yes, we did.
How can I find that on the website?
We could send it to you.
That would be good. Thank you.
You bet.
Commissioner Bradbury, do you have anything you want to add or ask?
I I do know, and I I think I've shared some general comments. And 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 the big concern that I have, and certainly outreach falls into this is we we do a tremendous amount of planning. There's there's an awful lot of efforts put forth in everything we do. And there are some areas where we meet reality head on. And we find that we are not very effective in what we've done and what we planned for. And some of these are intractable problems. And we can plan all we want. The reality is going to be very, very tough to to affect. Homelessness is one of those. One of my pet peeves, and and I won't get off on my soapbox, has to do with affordable housing. I have yet to see an agency anywhere that can adequately define affordable housing. For for a young mother with two kids working for eighteen dollars an hour, a thousand dollars a month is not affordable housing. And you are not going to find that anywhere in this region, anywhere without public assistance. And that is an intractable problem. And then you take that down to the bottom and you go, what do you do with the homeless people? Do we really want to say, all right, we're we're going to put you in an efficiency apartment? We we really can't afford that. And and those facilities are not available anyway in significant quantity. So that's what I mean by an intractable problem. And and we're going to have to continue to struggle to find ways to deal with these things in a more effective way.
Absolutely.
Fantastic points, Commissioner Bradbury. And, you know, that that like I had mentioned during the presentation tonight, that is, you know, we're we're working on that and and we're forced in 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 some ways forced to now, you know, the and something that Paul didn't talk about in his presentation is that not only, well, they haven't made this change yet, but it's but it's going to happen that right now when PSRC certifies our comprehensive plan, it is based on transportation policy. So it's really based on that regional transportation plan and strategy. That's what they're looking at. And they're looking throughout the comp plan to make sure that there's consistency across the board, but they're really focused on transportation because those transportation dollars are tied to that certification and those transportation dollars from the state flow through Puget Sound Regional Council. So that's how that works. Now, with new state law that's been that's been passed and changes to Growth Management Act, certification may also be based on housing and our housing strategies and our local housing strategies and what we're going to do about affordable, attainable and available housing. And those numbers are coming soon and they that that will tell us And they, that, that will tell us what we're lacking. In Gig Harbor for affordable and attainable and available housing. And it will be based on average median income. And so that's, that's what the state has decided is the, the way to handle this. And it gets to your point too, Commissioner Bradbury, about the fact that, you know, a, a mother, a working mom. Is making eighteen bucks an hour and can't, you know, and, and, and a thousand dollars a month is just, it, it is unattainable for them. And we, you know, in Gig Harbor. That is a reality, you know, it's very true in Gig Harbor. It's not true everywhere in the region. It's true most places, I think. But in Gig Harbor especially, I mean, if you look at the folks who live and are the folks who work in Gig Harbor on a daily basis. And say the service industries or in the hospitals and other local shops and things, they don't. Live in Gig Harbor, many of them, because they can't afford to. They can't afford to live and work within the, within the city. So. Those are, those are realities. And you're right, you know, affecting it is very difficult. And how do we do it? Well, that's what we're trying to figure out. And, you know, they're giving us the data. And then we're going to take that data, we're going to work with, you know, work with these consultants. And we need to get those policies, you know, we have to come out, we, we have to have some strategy. Within our comp plan this time around to absorb however, whatever that number ends up being within those. Eight, within those AMI bands, average median income bands. In order to get our comp plan certified is what it looks like. And so it's going to be difficult and some jurisdictions are crying foul. And it's going to be a little bit of a, a little bit of a dogfight for some places, but. We just have to wait and see what the numbers tell us. And then we need to think about. Is that real? Is that, is that, is that a reality for us? And i- is it based in any kind of fact? And by that, I mean. Do we have, do we have the buildable lands? Do we have the available lands to be able to, to build that housing? Or are we talking about rezones? Land use changes across the board and does our community? And our council have the stomach for that kind of a change? So that's. These, this is what's coming to planning commission, and I'm, I'm glad you put your finger on that. And I didn't bring it up to Paul because I didn't want to put him on the spot because I know they're. They're wrestling with that right now and PSRC is under a little bit of heat, I think, in dealing with it, but it's not really their issue either. It's coming from the state. So this, this next legislative session will be really, really interesting, I think, in the state.
Counting on you, Robin. We're counting on you.
Oh.
No pressure.
I will come through, I promise.
One other question?
Go ahead.
Carl and, and Robin, what happened with the four? Amendments that went forward to council? Did they go forward and did they get approved?
First reading is, is coming up on the fourteenth.
On the fourteenth.
And then second reading on the twenty eighth. So we'll have a. We'll have something by the end of the month.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? If not, thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Michelle, Carl and Robin. And Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Next meeting is when, John?
The next meeting is scheduled for November seventeenth.
We'll be talking to Commerce and December first, we'll be reviewing the budget.
I move to close the meeting. All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye, aye. Motion carries unanimously. So I will see you all on the seventeenth and Carl, I will see you tomorrow.